Okay.
All right, we'll call the order of the Tuesday, June 15th, Public Works Committee meeting. Do a roll call, please.
Jenny Wook, City Council.
I'm City Council.
Maureen Whitaker, staff.
Trent Ward, staff. Aaron Post, staff.
Jim Franch, council.
Could I get approval of the wonderful, very complete minutes that Maureen prepared?
Move to approve the May meeting minutes.
Back in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. All right, minutes passed. First item on the agenda is old business, six-year transportation improvement program. Update and project cost discussion. Looks like that's you, Aaron.
Thank you, Councilmember Franch. So just want to go over first some of the items that are in your packets for tonight. One, you'll see the 2021 tip memo. You'll also see last year's 2021 approved tip map. You'll see this year's 2022 tip map, the proposed tip map. And then I also created a spreadsheet that compares last year's approved tip projects to this year's proposed tip projects. So we wanted to bring this back to Public Works Committee a second time to present the following. One is an updated proposed 2022 tip map based on the recommendations from the May Public Works Committee meeting. And wanted to clarify something, so as a matter of clarification due to some document control issues at the last Public Works Committee meeting, some of the 2021 project numbers that were discussed in that May meeting were inaccurate. So for that reason, I've provided this 2021 tip map. So I apologize for that. I accidentally grabbed a map, the map that went to council, but it wasn't the approved version. So some, if you remember, there were some changes recommended by council at that meeting. So a couple of the project numbers we discussed last time were just slightly inaccurate. So you'll see that this is, this is now corrected. We also wanted to discuss tonight how we're updating the tip project costs. So the tip project cost will be updated to be consistent with the FHWA National Highway Construction Cost Index, or the NHCCI. This is consistent with how the TIF, or Transportation Impact Fees, are being updated. And yeah, Mo, if you could, if you could share that, we can look at that for a minute here. So this is a plot of the NHCCI, or National Highway Construction Cost Index. So on the far right-hand side, you see this 1.86 for Q4 of 2020. That's the most current information that they've provided to us. And on the left-hand side, if you look back to Q3, Q4, kind of in between Q3 and Q4 of 2018, you'll see that that value, if you look straight across the chart, is exactly the same, or very, very similar to what it is today. So what we are proposing is, as of this year, we're going to leave this alone because there's literally no change from when this, these costs were updated last. And those were updated last as part of the 2018 transportation element process that I'm sure everybody remembers well. So, yeah, our proposal is to leave this alone because there's literally no change since the last update. Obviously, as Trent and Jeff and I get engineers' estimates, or we refine cost information and get values, that we update those continuously. But if, if the project was a cost that we estimated during the 2018 transportation element, then we're going to leave that alone for now until, until next year. And that's something we're going to definitely do annually because, I mean, this could, this could skyrocket next year. And we're kind of expecting that, this cost index to change significantly. So we'll look at this every year, and you'll see this plot and an update to our tip project costs every year. However, I, I don't, I don't have the report done yet. As soon as we get off this, this, as soon as I'm out of this Public Works Committee meeting, I'm going to begin working on that report. And I think our, you will see that prior to the June 28th council meeting.
Aaron?
Yes.
The index that runs latitude there on the left, index 2003, Q1 equals 1, starts out at 1.84.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
What, what does, what do those numbers represent?
Yeah, that's a great question. When I, Jeff showed me this map recently, and I believe, you know, I can, I can pull that up and get back to you. I'm not entirely sure, to be honest.
Well, okay, I, you know, I, so this, this map that's, that's running horizontally with the corridors underneath it, I'm assuming that, that the, the lines that are going up and down following those corridors, i- is that the costs? Or the, is that relative to dollars? Or what is, what is that actually indicating?
Yeah, this is just the, the construction cost index. So if you'll see in 2018, it was 1.84. It kind of, as it moved forward from Q3 of 2018, it kind of leveled out, but then it skyrocketed in 2019, and then it dipped back down to, in Q4 of 2020.
Well, I, to tell you the truth, I really have, I'm, I'm very, very skeptical of the accuracy of this, given the overall tremendous inflationary numbers with just building costs in general, especially materials. So I, I find it really hard to believe that this is an accurate map that shows, apparently in between quarter three of 2020 and quarter four of 2020, that these costs have gone down.
Yeah, I, I understand the concern. I guess, like I said, we're definitely expecting to see due to, to some of these costs increases due to, you know, production issues and lumber, timber costs going up. We do fully expect to see this, you know, I don't know if it's going to skyrocket, but we expect to see this go back up. So this, the most recent data they've provided to us is from Q4 of 2020. So yeah, obviously, the end of last year, but like you mentioned, I would expect to see this go back up.
Now, if I might jump in just really quick. Incidentally, though, I would like to point out that we, we staff were surprised in '21, so in the last six months. The bidding that we've done for capital projects, the, the costs are not coming in as high as we thought they would. So for example, we bid the Stinson Avenue project, we bid the 38th Avenue, 38th Street project, we're currently bidding the Gig Harbor North pedestrian improvements. But the Stinson and the 38th actually came in on, at and around engineers' estimate, and we really anticipated those were going to be higher than they were. Now, we're about to advertise lift stations six and 12 also. But our consultants that are doing engineers' estimated costs for construction, they're saying, you know, we're not anticipating significant cost increase even for those lift stations this summer. Um, and I think what 2020 is reflecting is that so much stopped in 2020. Because these are indexes, so they're trends, they're not dollars in particular. And what I believe the index qualifier on that left side there, that says index 2003, Q1 equals 1, is to give us a reference. So they're saying in the year 2003, quarter one was an index of one. They just picked that, that's the baseline. So then our, you know, our costs have gone up to 2018, Q3 on this chart, between quarter one of '03 to quarter three of 2018, we're looking at, you know, 1.8 times the cost. So pretty significant cost increase over that 15-plus-year period.
Yeah, Trent, I can confirm what you just said. I, the, the map here that we're looking at is a zoomed-in version, so it doesn't show it going all the way back to 2003. But yes, it is on the, on the left-hand side there, that is a reference to the 2003, Q1 being at a value of one.
So what is a practical application of this? Just to tell us that prices are going up for everything, and we could, we should expect to pay more for our projects? Is that what this is about?
Well, this, this, you know, shows us in this graph period from 2018, Q3 to 2020, Q4, it shows that pretty much, when we came out of 2018, prices skyrocketed in 2019. They had a little bit of a dip mid-year, they were right back up at the end, you know, at the beginning of 2020, and then COVID, I don't know, they didn't put a COVID factor in this, but prices definitely were going up from 18 to 19. What I kind of wonder is, you know, the data is going to be skewed like it is in so many things with this COVID effect on our economy, so. Well, as I say, I have real problems with the accuracy of that map. And, you know, I've done some projects of my own, and I, I know what the increase of pricing is. I'm not sure if this, you know, I, I'm sure the increased prices of petroleum projects must, what, what does the National Highway Construction Cost Index, what items are they tracking?
I don't know if you have a list available, Aaron, but the highway index tracks all costs for, for, you know, everything from oil to steel to aluminum, gravel prices, labor costs. I mean, they're, they're looking at all of what it takes to construct, you know, public infrastructure projects.
Well, any, any news that I've seen, or anybody that I've talked to that's done any kind of a projects, this, this graph is patently false. The costs are through the roof. And I, I just, you know, I think that we need, our TIF amount needs to keep pace with these costs. And if we're using faulty data to put together what our TIF cost is going to be, that is just going to set us further behind.
Is my voice being heard here? This is Bob Larson. I, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands, this is the index, it shows you a relative, this is not an exact pricing scheme. And it was just provided by staff to show you the relative difference there. You got to realize the difference, you see those lines on there, the vertical lines, that those are relative differences, that they're not remarkably different from one another. It just shows on the graph as being as such. Difference in 1.84, 1.9 is not a great deal of a margin of difference here. I want to ensure everybody understands this. These are accurate, these are accurate, as across the national, across the country. I don't think we want to say it's specific to Tacoma, or the Puget Sound region, or even Washington State. It's just more of a, of a barometer, if you will, just for discussion purposes, so we're well aware of this stuff. That's all it's intended to be. Say it's inaccurate, it's just, it's just not, you know, in all due respect to, to Councilmember Franch, it's just not, that's not an accurate statement. We're just trying to show you the relative difference here, and making sure everybody understands and appreciates that. That's all it was intended for.
Is the dates, are the dates on the bottom? I assume there's some actual lag in the data that is, this is a trailing indicator. You, you don't know.
The bottom, there are dates across the bottom. I don't think we need to belabor that, that whole issue. There's their dates that are clearly showing what, what the costs were relative to the projects.
Right.
And they, they compiled this data across, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of projects.
Yeah.
And they're trying to show, that, that's, that's all it was intended to show.
Yeah, sort of like the Consumer Price Index, only for highways.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a better way of putting it. You, you took three words and described, I tried to tell you in about, you know, three minutes, so yes.
Well, and, and let's, you know, we'd all agree, we all have seen massive price increases on, say, building materials, but that's only occurred this spring, this early this spring.
Very, very recent.
And that's not reflected on this index graph, because it ended, you know, in December, effectively December of last year.
Yeah.
So really, we saw the big building material upswing in pricing just over the last three, four months.
Exactly.
Yeah, if I could chime in here, I, I looked up the, what is the National Highway Construction Cost Index? Because it sounds like Councilmember Franch was asking where this data comes from, so I could just read their definition off the website that produced this index. So it's a measure of the average change over time in the prices paid by state transportation departments for roadway, construction materials, and services. So that's where, that's where it comes from.
Well, I, I think we need to look into the possibility, you know, it's, it's, the United States is a big country, and I think we need to, if we're going to be responsible to our citizens, we need to maybe change to a formula that is tracking more of what things cost in Washington State. If, if this is a 50-state average, that, that really doesn't reflect what's going on in our state, so.
I, I don't think we need to belabor the issue any longer. It was just, it was more of an index to show you what's going on. We could argue this all day, but it's not going to change the fact that we're going to have to put out for bid every one of these projects, or, and we may have to take a look at what the, you know, what the regional pricing index is, yeah, for concrete, for asphalt, whatever it might be. And that's going to be fluctuating, depending upon the time of the year, and the types of projects, and the materials you're using, and the volumes, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, and I can assure you, Councilmember Franch, the, the state of Washington DOT, they, they track similar costs for just the state of Washington. And many, many times, we utilize their records to, to estimate unit pricing for our local projects. Because they look at the east side of the state and the west side of the state, we all know, think a little bit different. So we validate costs on a more local basis quite often when we make cost estimating for capital projects.
Well, I get, my point is, Mr. Larson, is that we're, we're using these numbers to calculate our transportation impact fees, and those need to be representative of what the actual costs are.
So that's, that's one element we're using, yes. It's not the only element we're using. Okay, I think we, I think staff finished that piece, if the committee wants to move on.
Yeah, actually, that, that was the end of everything that I had prepared. I don't know if we want to pull up the map and look at it, or if all the council members here have had a chance to look at it yet. But yeah, we're, we're here to answer questions. That was everything that I had prepared.
Yeah, I've, I've looked at it, actually, in quite a bit of detail, and it's, it's, I think it's a pretty darn good shape. It's called, you, you guys have really upped your game in the, over the last couple of years in terms of how this is prepared, and particularly prioritized, et cetera. Particularly happy with the movement of the so-called Phase Two, I believe it is, of the 38th Avenue thing that we, we've heard about so many times in the last year or so. This is the stretch between 56th and Hunt. The one with the, with the Grand Canyon ditches and the very small shoulders and a lot of traffic. So that's moved up quite a bit. So my assumption is those top three projects are essentially going to be done in early 2022. So in terms of bringing new items into the fold, probably would start around four on the priority list and move down from there. So anyway, I think it looks pretty good. I, I had a few questions. One of them, and, and by the way, I don't have the data yet, but that is Vern Hartson, Bert Hartson is the, in my mind, is the, the last loop, last part of the, the bypass loop consisting of Stinson, Harborview, North Harborview, and then on to Crescent, or on to Vern Hartson, over Crescent Valley. And there's two aspects to it. One is, I think that will become the next choke point in people trying to get to the east side of unincorporated Pierce County. It looks that way. And I don't think we want them going all the way up to Vern Hartson and coming back down to take a mile or way. So I think as a traffic element, the other thing we've heard, I think multiple times over the last, probably half a year, is speed on the hill coming down Vern Hartson. Keep hearing that story, it's been recurring for several months now. So it's something we, I think we had to look at it, and we may want to consider moving that one up priority-wise, called, we may have to do something there, okay? The other thing that came to mind, and I'm not advocating it yet, but we haven't done a traffic study, we're coming up on the four-year mark, if I remember correctly. It was done, and actual data was assembled in 2017, if I recall, it was labeled a 2018 report. And it's 221 now, so we're four years on the old one. So that's another thing we ought to be considering. But by the way, due to the fact that we, we had a, about a year and a half carved out of the, the growth curve as far as traffic with the pandemic, we're probably right about where we were, where we left off back in 2019, I would guess, right now. So that's purely a guess. But it's another thing we ought to start thinking about, is when the next traffic study should be done, and what should we be studying? For example, I think we should be confirming the things that we have done are doing what they're supposed to do, okay? And that would be primarily Stinson, Stinson-Rose Dale intersection, Stinson-Harborview intersection. Some of these other ones were where we've actually implemented some of these actions since then. So anyway, that's my comments, other than Vern Hartson's the only one, and by the way, I don't have anything specific on it, but it's something we really ought to keep our eye on, okay? It's, it could rise quickly, if my guess is correct, both from a traffic standpoint and also from a speeding standpoint.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Heims. I didn't hear any specific questions there, but we appreciate your feedback.
Do you have anything further, Councilmember Wook, on this issue?
I, I don't really, but I, I would like to know what is the Hunt Street, Hunt Street 38th Avenue intersection improvements? And, and why, how does that differ from the other things on 38th Street that we're looking at?
Yeah, if we could pull up the map there, no, that'd be great. Yeah, the Hunt Street, 38th Avenue intersection improvements, we, we eventually want to, you know, look at doing either a signal or a roundabout, or adding some efficiencies and capacity to that intersection. So that one's still a ways out. We have, we have not done any preliminary engineering or design on that currently, other than we've modeled it through the transportation element process.
Why would that not be in the same area as the whole, as the whole 38th Street there? Why are they so, why are they numbered so differently? So for example, the 38th Avenue Phase Two, right? 38th Street, this year it's, it's six, but the 38th Street intersection improvement is 15. Wouldn't, wouldn't they, they're in the same area, wouldn't that happen at the same time?
It could. I, I think they're split out like that mostly because when we're applying for grants with TIB or federal grants, the project number 15, the Hunt 38 intersection improvement project, is a very specific intersection project with capacity and efficiency improvements associated with it. When we're talking about the other 38th Avenue projects, although there may be some capacity improvements, I think most of those, and maybe Trent's been a little bit more involved with these, but most of those are pedestrian-related, adding sidewalks to the corridor and things like that. So I think that's why they're split up as they are, because we'd have a better opportunity, for example, through TIB of getting a grant for just the, it'd be a different grant for the Hunt 38th intersection than we would be applying for, for the roadway segments such as project number six.
Okay, thank you.
So it's an administrative thing versus a reality, I think's what you're saying. We probably would combine them when we did it.
They could be combined. It would be more beneficial to apply for grants separately.
Got it.
The challenge is always with a lot of the grants that we have had the benefit of obtaining over the years, there are competitive grants, so there's points for different purposes and reasons. If you go after a bunch of pedestrian improvements, you can score a lot of points, but if you threw an intersection into the mix of it, it may affect your competition with others that are going after pedestrian improvements.
Got it, thank you so much.
Yeah, it's the way they've split up the grant dollars, primarily on the TIB or the state side. The feds, not so much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, looks, looks good. But by the way, the, the, I guess the other thing, and this is a comment, I'd really like to, to, when we discuss this with council for approval, I'd really like this to be the starting point of the 2022 budget discussion, and really get a handle on that fast. Seems like every year, we have a bunch of flyers that come out of nowhere in October and November, when we start talking budget and then, in the transportation area. Prentice Street, I can rattle off a series of them, probably just came out of nowhere, the 11th hour. And we wasted quite a bit of time debating some of those things. So to me, it would be very helpful, I think, from an efficiency standpoint, that once we've got our priorities set on the tip, that they not only feed the TIF, but they also feed the budget discussion. Oh, hey, we had the discussion on functionality as far as what we want, what our priorities are. So that ought to be a, a, a major driver, to be quite honest, of the budget discussion for transportation stuff. All right, well, we have no new business scheduled, so I guess we'll move into the CIP review.
Okay. Hopefully, you've all had an opportunity to, to look at these CIP schedules. Hopefully you've all had an opportunity to, to look at these CIP schedules. Tiers one and two are the, are the active ones. Tiers three and four, not so much. However, there has been a couple of highlighted changes in tier four. But so we can start on tier one. And these are, these are just reflective of the current status of each of these projects. Been some minor movement. This is pretty well trending like you've seen over the last, at least over the last month.
Yeah.
End boat brick house rehab. That project's progressing slowly at the moment because of the chimney replacement element. Anyway, we're resolving that. There's involvement, of course, with the, the Design Review Board and the Historic Society relationship to the end boat brick house. So that's being resolved. We're just waiting for the final design on the, the physical construction of the chimney back to the way it was, and then that work will proceed and that project will wrap up. The railway carriages and boat fabrications in process as we speak. Delivery of materials to the boat shop should be beginning in July. And they have a hydraulic permit through Fish and Wildlife for when they're allowed to actually work over the water. That starts about mid-July, and then they can work into, I believe, next May, March. So that's what's reflected here on the installation. Community paddlers doc, I can't speak to that in any level of detail beyond the dates you see there. Jeff's been primarily involved in that one. So if you do have questions, feel free to shoot, run, run by Jeff. No changes on Shoreline Master Program Amendment and Public Art, Austin Eschuary Honoring Symbol. There has been some changes in dates there, and again, Jeff's been primarily bird dogging that, so we can move forward. Okay, so then we're on to I, number twenty-three, there Masonic Lodge Visiting. And the Ansett Shun Power Waterfront Storage, Ansett Park, Advanced Mitigation, Parks Recreation Open Space. Those are all, again, Jeff's leading the charge on those. I believe if you have any questions about them, please contact him. Scansy Net Shed Painting, I can speak to. We're, we're currently putting together a bid package to get out on the street and advertise on July first to have the net shed painted this year. Some of the, some of the challenges are to get it painted before the, the seasons and the weather changes this fall and to coordinate in all of the other activities that are occurring downtown. So that one's going to be a challenge, but we're, we're going to advertise it first of July and hopefully have it awarded by the end of July, and construction start right after the Gig Fest is our tentative schedule. And we feel that should give about three to four weeks' time, get that building cleaned up and a fresh coat of paint put on it. If there's any miscellaneous siding repairs to be done, we're going to keep them minimal. And that will be a part of the paint contract. Any roof repairs are not going to be a part of this contract. That will be dealt with through our operations folks. City Building HVAC, I'm not involved in HVAC stuff. I think it's just following its intended schedule. Next one is pedestrian crosswalk improvements, Gig Harbor North. That is currently bidding. We opened bids on June twenty-fourth. So a week from this Thursday. I'm going to, just to give you guys a quick heads up, I'm going to be sending out a, kind of a special request to the council for this project to award it in a non-customer-y fashion. And what I mean is we're opening bids on the twenty-fourth. We would like to bring the contract to council, assuming it's all appropriate and all the Ts crossed and Is dotted and criteria met by the bidder. Bring it to council on the twenty-eighth for award. What that means is we aren't going to be able to get the information in front of council until probably end of business on Friday, the twenty-fifth, or the immediate council meeting following on Monday, the twenty-eighth. Otherwise, we will be delayed until July twelfth to award the contract. We lose approximately three weeks.
Oh.
And, and I know how important this project is to council and the community, and we'd like to, if possible, move it forward in this maybe less than desirable manner. But we're gonna, we're gonna plead our case to you all and see if it's something we can make happen.
You won't have to plead very much. In fact, I think Jenny's approved it already.
You bet.
Well, you know.
And me too, by the way.
We wouldn't normally even ask it, to be honest, and it's just an ask. I'll be sending this out and explaining the what and why on this, giving you guys the timeframes in the contract. Of course, you know, everybody wants to get these RFB assemblies installed as soon as possible this summer and for sure for the next school year. So anyway, that's a little, a little extra on that one.
That's good. Yeah, anything you can do to pull that off, that's great.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks. That's good to hear. The Operation Center, no change. Stinson Avenue Pavement Overlay Project, Rose Dale Intersection, no change. The Harborview Intersection is on schedule to advertise this Thursday, the tenth. That's going to hit the streets. We're going to do a three-week advertisement period with the intent of bringing a bid award to council on the twenty-sixth of July. And then construction is, there is a little error on here under line sixty, construction. We originally scoped it to begin August sixteenth, but in order to not create any havoc for the Gig Fest, the Gig Festival, we're going to push it one week and start after the festival on the twenty-third.
Is, is there any way on this that you could indicate the rough spans of when that intersection's actually going to be closed? Before everybody reads this over a half year of being closed and has a heart attack, it would be worthwhile, I think, to somehow indicate on here. Yeah, this is the construction period, but the stretches when the actual intersection will be down, closed for traffic are only a, hopefully a small portion of the span.
Yeah, I don't think we can define that right now, and the reason I say that is we staff could define a timeframe, but what we would prefer is get a contractor lined up and then sit down with them and define the actual closure times.
Okay, e- even if it's just a footnote that says of that span, estimated some total amount will result in the actual intersection being closed.
Sure, I mean, we could, we could try to do that.
Yeah, that, that would be worthwhile.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll look at doing that or at least providing some indication, hey, there will be closures and it, but it will only be thus and so.
Yeah, because I think the, the tack you took on the, on the upper one, the Rose Dale-Stinson thing worked pretty neat. You went on a full-court press and had the actual intersection down a relatively short period of time for what was going on.
Yeah.
I think that worked very well. What, what is going on with the repair of the sewer main?
It's, well, the sewer main replacement slash repair is the first order of business in this contract. So literally on August twenty-third, whoever the contractor is, they're, they're being instructed in the contract documents, that's what you got to do first. So we're defining utility work has to occur first. What we anticipate is this contract's going to be primarily utility work this year. Come November-ish timeframe, when the weather turns bad and wet, we're likely going to suspend the contract through the wettest, coldest part of the winter. What we don't want is to have a contractor out there trying to, you know, do grading, fill, earthwork in the middle of the winter in that intersection and make a bigger disaster out of it than it needs to be. So we're considering we will suspend and then have them start up March first of twenty-two and finish by hopefully June of twenty-two.
Yeah.
We think that's the most appropriate way to do this. I mean, it's kind of, you know, it's, it's going to be two separate shameful periods, but we don't want to mess all winter long, not next to the shoreline.
Thank you.
Thirty-Eighth Avenue Phase One Project, you know, has been awarded. Masonic Contractors is our construction company, and they will be starting work out there on Thirty-Eighth on the twenty-eighth of June. So we're, we're having them hold off till school's out, which twenty-third's last day of school, and then getting them in there and pushing them to be done as they can before school starts again.
So is there a chance that they will get done before school starts again?
There is a chance. We, we, we're going to push them hard because the work they need to do, they should be able to get my own share of it done during the summer months before school starts in September.
Yeah, that would be a mess if they're still working on that street when folks are coming and going so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Where are you at with the county when we're going to get this R portion done and then it's going to be a sidewalk to nowhere?
Yeah, we've been in conversation with the county. They, of course, we can't tell them what to do. They have our plans. They know we're building it right now. I think their six-year TIP shows planning level effort on their, you know, portion of it south of us. I, for next year, and I don't know if they've allocated construction money or not.
Well, I ran into Councilmember Young. I don't know if I mentioned it at the last meeting, and he, he was actually, was caught off guard that we were moving ahead with this, and he had mentioned that he thought that there was some money that the county had. I wasn't really set aside, but he thought that there was, there was some money somewhere that he was going to try. And I, I mean, are, are you in contact with Councilmember Young on this project?
No, not Councilmember Young. I mean, I haven't been, but me and the engineering staff have been in contact with Brian Stacy's office and with their Capital Projects engineer, oh, and her name slipped in my mind. We've been coordinating with them for the last three years on this.
Well, it would have been nice to have a complete sidewalk.
Yeah. We agree. I mean, you know, complete, so we're going to build to Briarwood. And of course, we know we, we have our Phase One B and One C, so we still have a big gap to get up to Fifty-Sixth. And then, of course, Phase Two is a big gap, so.
Well, absolutely, but from, from Briarwood to not complete it to the school is ridiculous.
Yeah, no, I agree. And that's why we've been, we've been in touch with them and sending them our plans so they can design and do their thing, but.
All right, thank you.
Um, let's see. So Burnham Street Improvements is in design, that's accurate. ADA Self-Evaluation Transition Plan, no change on there.
Trent?
Yes.
On that Burnham Drive, do we have a cost estimate on that yet, an engineer's estimate?
We don't beyond the estimates that were used to establish the budgets or the costs within our current budget.
Right, but the, the, the plan that ultimately got approved was none of the plans that we were looking at before.
Yeah, the joint, the multi-use path, the ten-foot path option.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, that is what we use though for the, well, no, the budget was based on our, our city standard roadway cross-section. You're correct. We have not updated those costs that you see in the budget based on the ten-foot wide multi-use path.
When, when, when will we have those numbers?
We'll have them at thirty percent design, but that's going to be probably August timeframe.
All right, thank you.
And what we're pushing the consultant on is to at least have as good a cost as they can before we do our budget, budgeting for twenty-two. So we're pushing it for August. Hopefully have some good numbers to share with council and planning the construction phase of it in twenty-two.
Thank you.
No change on the timelines for the water Intertight Project or the Comp Plan Update, Water Comp Plan Update. Well, number three, the well development is all done, so the, the casings in the ground, the pipe between the, the tank and the new casing is installed. What's left to do is to lower a new pump and drop pipe in the casing, get purities and turn the system on. And that's actually a separate contract from what you see here. It's a separate company coming in. The Pump Tech's coming in to set the pump. We have the pump in our hands. We have all the pipe in our hands. We just are getting, trying to get Pump Tech here to do the install. So we're still shooting for the thirtieth. Wastewater Projects, I mentioned Lift Station Six and Twelve are about ready to advertise for bids. So those dates are as accurate as we know today. Murphy's Landing Marina Navigation Channel dredge. I'm working with parametrics on a scope and fee to get that design contract moving forward. As you know, the agreement with the Murphy's Landing is, has been, has been completed between council and the, and the yacht club, so.
Boy, it sure takes a long time for this project to, to get completed, it seems like.
Yes, it has taken a long time. I will agree. Burnham Drive Ninety-Six Cover Repair is a part. Burnham Drive 96 cover repair is a part of the Burnham Half Street Improvements. So those dates are same as the road project above. Storm utility revenue study Jeff is bird dogging that one. And he he mentioned earlier today that that's on track. That's tier one. Let's see.
Sorry, guys, I can only load up so many on this at a time, so it just takes just a second. I've got my my quiver is full. Okay, this is tier two.
Here too. Native vegetation plantings. We've we've got that slated for this fall in the planting season. And then wastewater projects. No change on generator replacement timeline. The digester upgrades, I believe Darryl has modified those dates. That's why they're highlighted in yellow. And then Jeff mentioned this morning, utility rate studies are are on track.
Have we heard anything more from the state about upgrading some wastewater treatment issues? Because of the protein, I guess, in the water?
I'm not aware, but I'm I I wouldn't necessarily know that.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. Follow up with with Jeff or Darryl on that item.
Are you ready for tier three?
Yeah, tier three, I don't think had any changes. We can certainly pull it up if, but there were no date changes on it at all. And tier four.
Oh, point four. Hold it.
Yeah, tier four is a little bit of repeat because we pulled the Scansy net shed forward to tier one. So we'll eliminate it off of here for after this. We've already talked about Scansy net shed. The commercial fishing home port. Jeff's changed those dates. I'm not involved in that, so I can't speak to it. Fishman Trail Connection to Harborview Drive, that's been pushed out basically to the end of the year. And I think we had talked about that last time. Annual payment maintenance, you know, we showed this to you last time too. That's being suspended or deferred to next year. Various crosswalk and sidewalk installations. That was a design contract. We pushed it out towards the end of the year as well. And no other changes have been made.
I I don't have it in front of me, but the 38th Avenue between 56th and Hunt. What does the span on that look like again? I assume it's in a preliminary design action, if there is any action. Hopefully there's action in 2022.
That's the phase two portion?
Phase two, yep.
No, we don't have any. We have done nothing currently on that. It's certainly like you were mentioning earlier. It's a, you know, with the six year TIP. It's something that if council wants to prioritize, we currently don't have it on our work plan.
I I guess I for one would like to get that moved up a little bit, particularly looking at your spans. A lot of your design stuff seems to be ending in the first or second quarter or by the first and second quarter of 2022. And it looks to me like we could at least get a start in the third or fourth quarter of 2022 on that particular project.
Could I give a clarification of which project I was?
It's the it's the the 38th Avenue project between 56th and Hunt Street.
It's the phase two we were calling.
Phase two, yeah, phase two, they call it.
Is that showing on the screen right now? I got a different screenshot of something here.
If we pull the tip map, it identifies it pretty clearly.
Yeah, it's up in the number six spot, if I remember correctly. Yeah.
Number six.
Okay.
Yeah, I I would certainly want to defer to staff about the the capacity to move something up and how that might affect other projects. That's the only condition I would want to put on this.
What was it?
I I think that it will be could be a discussion discussing at the budget time to decide what we're going to move forward for with in 2022, Bob.
I certainly appreciate that. Yeah, it's got to be a broader, fuller discussion with the full council. Yes.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. But again, tying the tying the the tip to the budget discussion. By the time we get there, the the first three are going to be pretty well along, if not pretty well gone, I would hope. First three items on the on the tip list, which means that number six is going to become more like a number three in the first or second quarter of next year. Okay, so that's what I'm thinking. So we'll we'll have the discussion, but but it shouldn't be like it's coming out of nowhere. No, we know what it is. We know it's high priority. We know we'd like to get going on it. And therefore we should have that discussion and we should have it in the budget.
So part of this is a this is part of the money that we've asked the federal dollars to go for. Do we know when we're going to hear from that? Is there a date that somebody will let us know if we got any money or not?
Well, Bob might, Bob Larson might know more about that than me, but I think it's engine on whatever the other Washington's doing with their infrastructure bill.
Right. We, yeah, we we are not familiar at all. In fact, I just emailed Dale Learn from Gordon Thomas Honeywell yesterday, asking him to keep us surprised of what the developments might be with Senators Cantwell and Murray, as well as Representative Kilmer on on their the programs that they've got. We have not heard anything more to date. But as soon as we do, we're going to keep council well apprised of that. I I can assure you of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that about wrap it up, Trent, for you?
Yeah, unless there's any other questions you have on these capital project schedules, I'm good.
Okay. I do not know if we have anybody in the public. Maureen?
Yes, we have one public comment that was emailed to me today that I would like to read.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to set my little timer. Okay, this public comment is from Thomas P. Wick, address Hunt Street Northwest, De Harbor, Washington, 98335. And regarding the courtyards at Scansy Park, based on public court case records, the conditional use permit for this development expired in 2008. Therefore, when it expired, this project was deemed null and void. Regarding the courtyards at Scansy Park, given the expiration of the conditional use permit, rendered this project null and void. And given the city allowed this project to start and to continue absent a conditional use permit and absent a downhill drainage conveyance to manage the increased stormwater runoff that will emanate from within it. The entire site must be returned to its predeveloped, undisturbed forested state to the extent possible, meaning all homes, all streets and all infrastructure must be removed. All removed soils must be re-imported and the entire site must be reforested. The new application for the construction of a clubhouse cannot be given consideration given the courtyards at Scansy Park Development started and was allowed to continue absent a valid permit. The courtyards at Scandi Scansy Park's final plat has already been approved. Therefore, no deviations from the final plat can be considered, assuming final means final. Within Gig Harbor's permit portal, I observed documents identified as courtyards at Scansy Park recorded final plat. However, these documents were obscured, blacked out, precluding public access view. The documents, the city labeled recorded final plat documents for the courtyards at Scansy Park cannot be found within the Pierce County Auditor's database, yet they are identified as recorded final plat documents within Gig Harbor's permit for portal. Gig Harbor rendered these recorded final plat documents inaccessible in parentheses, blacked out in an effort to leave them subject to revision despite final plat approval. Had Gig Harbor recorded the courtyards at Scansy Park Development documents and had those recorded documents showed 174 single family residents, they could not then later, if necessary, issue permits for the reconstruction of a clubhouse. Rendering the recorded final plat documents inaccessible from public access view within Gig Harbor's permit portal confirms the city knew in advance that if it was discovered the conditional use permit that allowed almost 12 homes per acre had expired, they could not allow 174 homes to be built. The applicant for a clubhouse in lieu of a single family residence is consistent with disbelief. And that preclude or concludes the public comment.
All right. I see we have one attendee. I am not sure. There is no name there. There's just a phone number. I don't know if that person has any public comment. I do not see a hand being raised.
Please feel free to hit star nine to raise your hand if you would like to speak.
Okay, I don't see any hand going up, so that will will close the public comment. And announcement of other meetings. The next meeting is scheduled for July 13th of 2021. And if there's nothing further, get a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, no. Hey, Trent, could you stay on a second?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.